Welcome to the Town of Millville Finance Committee Public Hearing. I'm gonna open this public hearing at 6:31 PM. I'll read the notice. The Millville Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 8th, 2013, 6:30 PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center to address the financial articles included on the special and annual town meeting warrants. The special and annual town meetings will be held at the Millville Elementary School on Monday, May 13th, 2013 at 6:30 PM. Paul Lett, Vice Chairman, Millville Finance Committee. Does anybody else need copies? Everybody needs copies, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
What's this?
Hold on.
Is this for us?
Rich, you have a copy of the budget? I got a lot of this stuff here.
Thank you.
And a copy of the special town meeting warrant and a copy of the annual town meeting warrant. Thank you.
They're just gonna plug you. There you is.
Alright. Can I have that in my box, please? Do you?
Thank you.
Is your budget even a budget?
Special.
Yes. Okay. Okay. We also have SBA reimbursement balance view. A lot of stuff here. Apologize for being late. Came out of Hudson today. And I was the color of this bag when I got home.
That's not good.
No. Okay. Okay. Let's start with the special town meeting warrant. Okay, I'll read through them. And if anybody has any questions after I've read each article, feel free to speak out and we can discuss as necessary. If I don't hear anybody speak out, I'm gonna move through these pretty quickly. And we're all pretty intimately knowledgeable of this stuff, but I know we do have an audience this time, so. Okay. "Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Millville who are qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Millville Elementary School on Monday, May 13th, 2013, at 6:30 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. Article 1, Snow and Ice Budget, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds or sum of money to fund Highway Department Snow and Ice Removal, account number 0001-423-5240-00, to supplement fiscal year 2013 town budget approved under Article 7 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant dated May 14th, 2012, or take any other action related thereto. It is submitted by the Board of Selectmen." Obviously, it's a financial article. Basically, the explanation is the article allows for the funding of the deficit in the fiscal year 2013 Snow and Ice Removal Budget Line Item. It's a pretty common thing. We overspend our snow and ice budget every single year. It's specifically designed that way, actually. And typically, we use our free cash to do so. Article 2, did anybody have any questions?
Is there a figure on that?
Yes. "Special Town Meeting Article 1, Snow and Ice, $148,699. The fiscal year 2012 certified free cash was $203,699. That leaves a balance after the special town meeting of $55,000 in our free cash account." The Finance Committee is recommending this year that that entire amount be put into the stabilization fund to continue what we started last year to start putting some money in and building that fund up from the minimum we've operated on for so long. Okay. "Article 2, Prior Year Unpaid Bills, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds some money for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Subsection 64, take any other action relative thereto." This article is a common article. It's in here every single year. And in case there are unpaid bills, you know, I believe... At this time, there aren't any. So barring any unforeseen circumstances. Okay, so we'll strike it, but it'll be stricken on the floor.
Okay, unless something comes up in the meantime.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it is a few days away, so. "Article 3, Fund Millville Elementary School Water Project, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the final reimbursement payment received from construction grant awarded to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the construction and equipping of the Millville Elementary School education structural expenses, account number 0001-300-5780-13 to MES Water, account number 0301-0005309-42, a sum of money to fund further repairs to the water system at the Millville Elementary School and take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, the explanation is this article allows for transferring funds currently allocated for structural repairs at the Millville Elementary School to the water operations of the Millville Elementary School for further engineering consultation and design as necessary and required by the Department of Environmental Protection. DEP is closely monitoring the ongoing water situation and the town must comply with the requirements of DEP. Please refer to the informational sheet entitled MSBA Reimbursement for Updated Account Balances." We all have a copy of that. Did you get a copy of this, Rich? No. Thank you. Mr. Bowen, would you like copies of the fund balances and the reimbursement?
That will be very helpful.
And do you have copies of the warrant?
I have the line item.
Okay. Would you like a copy of the special one?
I'd be great, thank you very much.
There we go. Usually, we have one or two extra, and usually, that's enough to give everybody in the audience one. Okay, were there any questions on that Article 3? Okay. And then at the end of the special, "And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting true and test copies thereof at the Longfellow Municipal Center, Millville Post Office, Millville Senior Center, Millville Library, all in the Town of Millville, 14 days least before the day fixed of said meeting." And it has been posted, so. Okay, what's that? Alright. Alright. Let's move on to the annual town meeting warrant. Okay. "Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Millville who are qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Millville Elementary School on Monday, May 13th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. Article 1, Monetary Increases, to see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as proposed by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item or article that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action in relation thereto." This is submitted by the Finance Committee for every town meeting. It is basically a protection for us and for the Town of Millville that anybody wanting to take money or add money to a particular line item has to tell us where they're getting it from. Okay. Article 2, Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee Member Salaries. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members and to set the amount of said compensation at $1,800 for the chairman, $1,500 for each of the other members, such compensation to be paid in three equal installments in the months of July, November, and March, provided however that no such installment shall be paid to a member who has not attended at least 60% of the meetings of this district school committee, excluding however any meetings not attended by such member due to the provisions of MGL 268A in the 12-month period prior to July 1st, November 1st, or March 1st, as the case may be. If such member has been a member for 12 or more months prior to said dates, or to a member who has not attended at least 60% of the meetings of the district school committee, excluding however any meetings not attended by such member due to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, in the period prior to each of said dates, if such member has not been a member for 12 or more months prior to each of said dates, or take any other action in relation thereto." This is an annual article, and this has not changed from last year. It's the school committee's compensation. Any questions? "Article 3, Revolving Funds, to see if the town will vote to continue authorizing revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, as follows. Cable Access Programs is the name of the fund. Expenditure Limit is $10,000. Police Department Revolving Fund Expenditure Limit is $1,000. That's for firearm fees. Inspector's Revolving Fund for inspection fees, $10,000. Expenditure Limit. Animal Control Revolving Fund for licensing fees and violations, $5,000." It does not appear that these have changed. This is an annual article required to operate our revolving funds. It allows the town to raise revenue from a specific service and use those revenues without appropriation to support the service. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 53E and a half, stipulates that each fund must be reauthorized each year at an annual town meeting, and that a limit on the total amount may be spent from each fund must be established at that time. This has not changed from last year.
Have you balances from previous years? This is added to, or?
This sets the expenditure limit. So these are revolving funds, so money flows in and out of them. And this just sets the limit that can be expended in the annual time.
In addition to what was going on last year?
No. No. It's really more housekeeping than anything to allow the authorization of the use of these revolving funds. Okay. "Article 4, Highway Department, Chapter 90. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from any available funds or any combination thereof, a sum of money for the Highway Department to be used for engineering, construction, reconstruction, and/or repair to town roads and bridges, with said funds to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under MGL Chapter 90, or take any other action in relation thereto." This is an annual article which allows the town to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer funds in anticipation of reimbursement revenues from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for road repair assistance under MGL Chapter 90. This just allows us to spend money on the roads and repairs to be reimbursed by the state. And right now, there is a balance in those funds, so it will be not necessary for us to take it from taxation. So we have a reimbursement from previous year that will cover us to our reimbursement level going forward in Chapter 90. With some very good and creative financing, we've been able to do that to the benefit of the town. "Article 5, Cable License Fees, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the lesser amount of either 50% of any fees collected in the cable license fund as returned from the cable license holder to the town, or $7,500, and forward said funds to the Superintendent of Schools of Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district, and further to authorize the Cable Access Committee to forward said funds on or before June 1st, 2014, or take any other action in relation thereto." This is an annual article which allows the Cable Access Committee to forward a certain sum of money from fees collected pursuant to the town's cable franchise license agreement with charter communications to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. A similar arrangement exists with the Town of Blackstone as well. This article was actually, it's an annual article. It was changed a little bit last year for the first time because we've been able to collect a greater amount of those fees, so we put a cap limit on our donation level, is essentially how this reads. So in the past, when we were only collecting, you know, $15,000 a year in cable license fees, we gave them half. Well, we've negotiated a better contract, so half could be significantly more than that, so we put a cap on our donation amount. Okay. Article 7. Oh, sorry, did I miss six?
Yeah, opposite loans.
Oh, I flipped the page too fast. Okay. Article 6. "Authorized Loans, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with approval from the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to review any notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 44, Subsection 17, or take any other action in relation thereto." This is an annual article which allows the treasurer to borrow money as necessary to fund the operations of town government in anticipation of receiving tax receipts, grants, bond proceeds, et cetera, that fund the operations of the town. Okay, no questions? "Article 7, Blackstone Millville Regional School District Establishment of Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to authorize the district to establish a stabilization fund effective July 1st, 2013, pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half, or take any other action in relation thereto." This was submitted by the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee. This article will allow the district to create an account to assist with the payment of future projects. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions about this at the town meeting, and we have been assured by the BMR School Committee and Superintendent that there will be representatives there accordingly to answer the questions that anybody might have about this. "Article 8, Acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Subsection 5, 54. To see if the town will vote to accept a modification of previously accepted provisions, Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Subsection 5, to 54, to be effective July 1st, 2013, amending the same to exempt assessments of taxes for personal property accounts with valuations of $1,000 or less, or take any other action in relation thereto." Basically, the explanation, I will read that because we're pretty privy to this already. "The article seeks to lower the personal property value on which the Board of Assessor is able to assess personal property taxes in town. The article proposes taxing personal property valued at more than $1,000 but less than $5,000. Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Subsection 5, 54, authorizes the town to establish the minimum value of personal property to be taxed at $1,000. The town currently taxes personal property at a minimum value of $5,000, with anything less currently being exempt. This change will result in minimal additional tax revenue for the town each fiscal year and will keep most small home-based business exempt. The primary purpose of proposing this change is due to the values of certain utility equipment. We believe this change will expedite the Department of Revenue's approval in connection with the annual process of approving the town's property values and setting the tax rate." Essentially, the utilities, because of their equipment on the poles, is worth less than $5,000. When we submit to receive property taxes from those utilities, it bounces back to us. And, I mean, it has to go through a lengthy process to get that cleared up. Basically, what this is gonna do is lower the minimum down to $1,000, and that equipment is all worth over $1,000, and it'll solve a whole lot of paperwork issues with that bouncing back and forth, and we'll be able to collect the tax revenues without issue. "Article 9. In the interest of the fact that this particular article takes a long time to get through, because we're gonna go through the budget, I would entertain a motion to skip this at this time and go back to it at the very end and end with that."
I'll second that motion.
Did it make it?
I'll make the motion, sorry. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're gonna put that to the end, because that's the one that's the most. So, Article 10. "Fund Capital Budget, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to fund proposed capital budget for fiscal year 2014, or take any other action in relation thereto." This annual article allows for transferring of funds into the capital budget if there are funds available at the end of this town meeting as part of the Finance Committee's ongoing goal to create a five-year capital plan for the town in an effort to address the numerous capital improvement projects that exceed the level of appropriation. "Article 11, Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds, a sum of money to be placed in the previously created stabilization fund under MGL Chapter 40, Subsection 5B, or take any other action in relation thereto." This annual article allows for transferring funds into the stabilization fund if there are funds available at the end of this town meeting as part of the Finance Committee's ongoing goal to build up town reserves. A stabilization fund is a type of reserve fund which can be used for catastrophic or emergency events, or when certain revenue sources are below prior year levels. The town currently has approximately $175,000 in the stabilization fund. A two-thirds vote of a town meeting is required to appropriate both to and from the stabilization fund. The Finance Committee is proposing, under this article, that the amount of $55,000 be placed into the stabilization fund. Barring any unforeseen circumstances of that changing. "Article 12, Town Officers. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint the necessary town officers whose elections are not provided for, or take any other action in relation thereto." This is specifically a Board of Selectmen article. It's an annual article which authorizes the Selectmen to appoint town officers to assist in the operation of town government. "Article 13, Streetlights. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to install, remove, or change streetlights if necessary fiscal year 2014, or take any other action in relation thereto." This is an annual article, gives the Selectmen the authority to change around the streetlights if necessary. To my knowledge, it hasn't been an issue for many years, so.
It's not every year.
Alright. There really are not any other financial articles. Seeing that our, with the exception of the budget article, and seeing as our public hearing is specific to the financial articles, I think we can waive the reading of the rest of the warrant. So let's go back to the budget article. Which is Article 9. "Fiscal Year 2014 Budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money that may be deemed necessary to defer town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest, and including the compensation for town officers, to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, or take any other action in relation thereto." It's an annual article that provides for the budget for the operating, for operating the Town of Millville. I just wanna say, I'm not gonna read the whole explanation from the Board of Selectmen, because I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but this year, the Finance Committee has been working very diligently, and we've had a lot of support from the town departments, and we've been able to balance the budget without using any reserve monies. It's a perfectly balanced budget. No net surplus, no net loss, and, like I said, we've, for the, there have been many of the previous years that we've had to use some reserves in order to do that, and this year, we've been fortunate that with some creativity and some cost-cutting measures, we've been able to keep it balanced without dipping into our reserves. So we can thank our Finance Committee members and the Selectmen and all of the departments for that. So, that being said, I will read through the proposed budget. I'm going to read the totals of each particular department. If there is a question on any of these, please say "hold," and we will go back to it, very similar to the way it's done at the town meeting. Okay. "Total Moderator Expenses." I'm sorry. "Total Moderator Salary, $100. Total Moderator Expenses, $50. Total Selectmen Salaries, $4,100. Total Selectmen Expenses, $2,000. Total Executive Secretary Salaries, $63,500. Total Executive Secretary Expenses, $1,000. Total Finance Committee Expenses, $780. Total Reserve Fund, $40,000. Total Town Accountant Salary, $21,906. Total Town Accountant Expenses, $16,190. Total Assessor Salaries, $18,571. Total Assessor's Expenses, $31,455. Total Treasurer Collector Salaries, $52,063. Total Treasurer Collector Expenses, $17,230. Total Town Council Expenses, $40,000. Total Systems Administration Salary, zero. Total Systems Administration Expenses, $25,000. Total Town Clerk Salaries, $20,816.[1792.74][1794.04][S01. Total Town Clerk Expenses, $7,050.[1797.84][1798.74][S01. Total Election and Registration- Total election and registration salaries, six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Total election and registration expenses, two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total census salaries, one thousand five hundred dollars. Total census expenses, six hundred dollars. Total conservation salaries, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Total conservation expenses, four hundred dollars. Total planning board salaries, thirteen thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Total planning board expenses, one thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Total zoning board salaries, five hundred. Total zoning board expenses, one hundred and ninety-six. Total town hall salaries, thirteen thousand. Total town hall expenses, seventy-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Total town report printing, twenty-five hundred. Gen, um, total insurance expenses, two hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents. Total retirement expense, sixty thousand six hundred dollars. Total police salaries, three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total police expenses, sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Total fire salaries, one hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Total fire expenses, seventy thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Total building inspector expenses, one thousand three hundred and forty-six. Total building inspector salary, six thousand. Total building inspector expenses, one thousand three hundred and forty-six. Total gas and plumbing inspector salary, two thousand. Total gas and plumbing inspector expen, expenses, two hundred. Total electrical inspector salary, three thousand. Total electrical inspector expenses, six hundred. Total civil defense salaries, two thousand. Total civil defense expenses, eight hundred and fifty. Total animal control salaries, five thousand. Total animal control expenses, two thousand eight hundred and fifty. Total tree warden expenses, four thousand. Total tree warden salaries, one thousand. Total communication salaries, thirty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty. Total communications expenses, thirty thousand. Total education expenses, two million eight hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and forty-two. Total highway administrative salary, seventeen thousand. Total highway maintenance salary, twenty-seven thousand. Total highway maintenance expenses, seventy-one thousand one hundred. Total snow and ice removal expense, sixty thousand. Total street lighting expense, fifteen thousand. Total highway, highway, street sweeping expense, fourteen thousand. Total board of health salaries, twenty-five thousand five hundred. Total board of health expenses, two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred. Total visiting nurse services, two thousand five hundred. Total human services, zero. Total senior center salary, zero. Total senior center expenses, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty. Total veteran salary, two thousand. Total veterans expenses, twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty. Total library salaries, five thousand eight hundred and four. Total library expenses, eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. Total parks and recreation expense, two thousand. Total parks expense, thirty-five hundred. Total historical commission expenses, four hundred. Total Memorial Day expenses, two hundred and fifty. Total centennial celebration expenses, two hundred and fifty. Total cultural council expenses, zero. Total flag warden expenses, three hundred and fifty. Total debt interest expense, seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty-five. For a grand total of four million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, with a projected income of four million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, with a difference of zero. All right, are there any further questions on the town meeting financial articles?
These line items that I have, I printed it out, and I, the figures are not the same as well. Some of the things are being read, but I think.
This one's gospel right here.
Yeah, I don't know what is on your site, but this is why.
Yeah, I don't think it's like caught up in.
Yeah.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, I would entertain a moment, a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
Give it a second.
Second motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.